I'll call the November meeting of the Area Plan Commission to order. Can I have your call, please?
Ryan Baker.
President.
Kevin Beaver.
Here.
Deborah Carter.
Here.
Terry Clark.
Here.
Mark Lincolnbeern.
Here.
John Collett.
Here.
Norm Froderman.
Here.
Don Folt.
Here.
Joan Hanley.
Here.
Marcus Maurer. Debbie May. Amanda Thompson. William Verdine.
Yeah, we do have a quorum. Can I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to comply with the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada under the principle of liberty and justice for all.
I assume everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes from our previous meeting as well as the status report. Are there any comments or corrections on those?
Motion for a second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We don't have any non-agenda public comments that you're aware of, do you? Okay. Move on to the Executive Director and Assistant Director's Report. Sidney, you want to start?
You have my, you have my report from the Indiana Stormwater and Floodplain Convention that I went to recently. I won't read it, it's long, so I won't read it out to you, but you're welcome to read it if you would like to do that.
Any questions for Sidney from the Plan Commission? Jared?
Yes, good evening. I have a handful of things here. First off, we were having some feedback issues with the microphones earlier today, so if you'd like to speak, please remember to turn your microphone on because we are live. Otherwise, please keep it off so that we don't have that annoying loud beeping feedback that we get from time to time. You have handouts there in front of you. Most frequently, those handouts have updates in the staff reports, so the staff reports, as I'm reading them, may not be reflective of what you have there in front of you. Just please know that I've incorporated those and we'll call those handouts out as we proceed. Okay, you also have in front of you a preview that I realized we need to make a couple changes on of the deadline and meeting dates for next year. We're not asking for any approvals tonight because, like I said, we need to make a couple of typographical changes, some errors that were on there, but we'll have those for approval for next month.
Are the dates correct?
Yes, yes. Okay, so, as I'm sure many of you figured out, packets were an issue again this month. Of the 14 that we sent out, eight of them did not arrive. Of those that did arrive, two arrived damaged. That's a pretty low success rate of packet arrivals. I don't know how best to address that, the issue kind of seems to come and go, and any changes we make would incur quite a bit more expense than either buying a more substantial packet, like a Tyvek container packet to put that in, or putting them in a box and shipping them that route. Neither of those seem all that attractive again because of the increased expense. The flip side of that is we had to run packets twice this month, which is also an additional expense. So, we need to look into what we can do to make sure that these get to you on time or at all and in one piece. That's something that I'll have to work out and we'll look into. One additional thing I wanted to include, and you may notice here this evening that we are missing someone. Some sad news to pass along, that Jim Christman passed away on October 10th. Jim represented Fayette and Sugar Creek in our organization for over seven years. Jim was a veteran and a very active member of our community. His knowledge and dedication to Western Hoat and Vigo County was second to none. We are grateful for his service to our country, his community, and our board.
Need a motion for accepting the Director's and Assistant Director's Report?
Sil. Sorry.
Those in favor?
Aye.
In memory of Jim, would everyone please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Your packet, if you got it, includes two administrative approval reports. We don't need action on that, they're just there for your review. And there aren't any communications received other than those that belong to the agenda items.
That's correct.
Okay. So, we'll move to under New Business Subdivisions with City Rezoning. Docket number 89, file number 49-25, 2025, I'm sorry, Blacktop Jack subdivision.
Would you like these two items heard concurrently?
Would, please, thank you.
Certainly. Starting with the subdivision, the property does not have a common address yet but is immediately north of an existing asphalt plant addressed 999 South Hunt Street. 23.37 acres, surveyor's Mr. Tolls. The request is to subdivide the parent tract, creating one new lot for commercial development. Health Department has approved sanitary sewer is available. This property does appear to fall within the 70 DNL noise contours surrounding Terre Haute International Airport, home and field, as defined in FAR Part 150 Noise Compatibility Plan. Per CFR Part 150, the airport knows airport noise compatibility planning, this commercial land use is considered generally compatible given the designated noise level reduction measures are taken. Indiana American noted that they cannot commit to providing water until they have what the required flows would be. It is not in a flood zone, lot does exceed the minimum lot size requirement, no new proposed public streets. Hunt has begun deteriorating after the last commercial development. Some areas of the once hard-surfaced road are now gravel. Tract A will be the primary site of the development. It's on the western half of the property. There's a 100-foot electric line easement noted and depicted on the plat. Uses under and around easement may be restricted. A 60-foot easement is planted for ingress egress. The surveyor's report notes other existing pipelines, mineral, oil, and gas easements exist on the property. Property will need rezoning. Hunt Street, of course, will need repair or improved to accommodate the new use. City Engineering provided comment on that matter. I believe that is a handout you have there. That they are currently negotiating a contract to have Hunt Road reconstructed from State Road 42 to 3,000 feet south of State Road 42, and that that project was being fast-tracked due to that rate of deterioration. So, offered a favorable on the primary and secondary with the following drainage erosion control plan approval bonding for infrastructure. If needed, fire department approval and reported within 90 days.
Okay, for the, for the rezoning, the property owner is Jack 46 LLC, represented by Mr. Felling. Proposed use is an asphalt plant. Proposed zoning is M2 heavy industrial district. The current zoning is O1 agricultural district. The petitioned property is located on South Hunt Drive, just south of 625 South Hunt Street. Is approximately 38 acres. To the north is O1, to the east is O1, to the south is M2 and O1, and to the west is also O1. The petitioner is requesting to rezone property for an asphalt plant. This rezoning accompanies the Blacktop Jack Lot 1 subdivision. The area is a mix of manufacturing, commercial, and agricultural. The property should be south rezoned to M2 in 2023 for the purpose of an asphalt plant on January 4, 2024. You do have an updated, they did mean to say, the engineering office gave a positive recommendation and they meant to say that the intended use would not directly alter the neighborhood's characteristic or create significant problems for the surrounding area, so that was a typo that I got for the first recommendation, and it's updated here. Staff provides a favorable recommendation with the following conditions: approval of the subdivision and approval of the site plan with stormwater drainage by the Department of Engineering.
Mr. Felling?
Mr. President. Members of the Commission, again Eddie Felling here on behalf of Lynn Law Firm, and I'm representing Reece Riley and Jack 46. As Sidney, as always, and Jared both have done a good job of outlining the project. If you can picture where the new milestone plan is, just to the west of the airport, this project would be right across the street to the north, so immediately adjacent to the existing plant. This new project is proposed to be about a $6 million development, and we're looking at nine new full-time jobs onsite once the plan is complete. They want to start construction hopefully in the first quarter of next year and have it completed and up and operational by the end of the year. They are not asking for any type of a tax abatement, so I wanted to make sure you were all aware of that. The way I see this, this is good for our community. As it stands right now, it's going to add competition. We only have one game in town currently. Your other asphalt options would be to either go to Cloverdale, Bloomington, or Monrovia. So, we've got ours and three others that are within the same, within some type of proximity, especially when we do roadwork projects, and three of those four are all owned by one singular entity. So, my hope is if this is approved, we add some competition, and this will help us both with the city and the county with our road projects and with our local development with regard to trying to bring in some additional commerce. The two major issues that have come up or questions, and at least I had them anyway, I drive every day, I live out east by the airport, and I drop my daughter off at Lost Creek. There's no question if you travel out in that area, there's becoming some danger there, I think, in my opinion, on 42 and Hunt. The tri轴s are pulling in and out there. People travel 60-plus along 42. My understanding is, obviously, when we get the improvements done on Hunt, that'll help, obviously, keep them on Hunt and hopefully push that traffic to 46. And I wish Marcus was here tonight because I believe the long-term goal is when they expand New College off of 46, the goal would be to force all truck traffic out to 46 and keeping them off the 42 intersection because there's no light in that area. Lastly, with regard to general environmental concerns, obviously, they're going to be dealing with petroleum-based products, but this is a highly regulated industry. Both IDIM and the EPA regulate the industry and will make sure to keep a close eye on what they're doing onsite. So, with that being said, I've got several representatives, including legal counsel, regional representative, and our new local plant manager here with us this evening. If any of them can answer any specific questions, be happy to do that. My main questions were how the asphalt plants work, and it is, it is kind of interesting. So, I won't, I won't delay any longer, but be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from anyone on the Plan Commission? Is there anyone here speaking in opposition to this request?
I'm not necessarily speaking in opposition, but I'm a little confused. This is what I got from, why I'm here is Bullseye Jack subdivision. Are you talking about something totally different?
Yes.
Woo! Good. Scared me for medicine.
No problem. That's down the line on the agenda.
That, well, I had no idea, so.
Okay. Jack part threw you off, I'm sure, so.
Okay.
This is Jack 46.
Well, well, this is 46.
I know, and I thought this is a different area.
Okay, thanks, guys, sorry.
Okay.
I also have a comment.
Sure.
This isn't in opposition to, but.
Come on up and tell us who you are.
My name is Cook. I own EDA Engineering. It's the firm directly in front of the new asphalt plant and adjacent to the incoming plant. To say that road is in poor repair is speaking lightly. Our only concern is that road be built to a standard that's going to live up and be able to handle the truck traffic because it's got, let's just say, quite heavy with the current plant. If we're going to double that truck traffic, that needs to definitely be addressed.
Absolutely. And one important point, I'm happy you brought that up. One of the first questions I asked my folks was what, what's going to happen traffic-wise out there if you're adding a whole new plant? The irony is it doesn't double the truck traffic, it's just redirecting the traffic between the two, the two different plants. So, we really don't, don't anticipate any type of a net increase in the number of trucks going in and out of this space. But I, Marcus Maurer, I know is well aware, I know the mayor's aware, Hunt Road wasn't in good shape on that side even before those plants were out there. So, I know their plan is to build it, knowing there's going to be this development, hopefully, and a lot of other development on that side of town. And again, I think New College will be extremely beneficial once it's open.
Right, okay. Anyone else want to speak to this issue? Well, entertain a motion. Go ahead.
I guess along with that, so what's happening with Hunt? Is it going to be improved before this is started? Or if it, if it can withstand what it's got now, the traffic, the weight? What's the status of the road to serve as something more?
I believe, and I don't know if anybody else can, I believe the plan is to have that improvement started and if not completed by next year. This project then, I mean, really, you've only got maybe a couple of weeks left. I don't know how long the existing plant, I don't, the plant's probably pretty close to shutting down. You know, you can't put any new asphalt down from November until it warms up in the spring. My understanding is it's on the agenda for the city to start approving that road next year. And again, they wouldn't be operational until next year anyway, and they'll be running against a deadline to try and get open before it gets cold this time next year.
Yeah, they really wouldn't be operational until the next year if their plant completion is end of year.
That's, that's my guess.
But I do think you're right. I think the city's plans are to rehabilitate Hunt Road next, next season, next construction season.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Anyone else?
Both, both docket numbers.
Okay. Got a second?
Okay.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Next item under New Business Subdivisions with County Rezoning is docket number 87, file number 48, 2025, Red Brick.
This also has an accompanying rezoning. Would you like that heard concurrently?
Yes, please, that's docket number 88.
Starting with the subdivision, the property is commonly associated with 3668 South State Road 63. Surveyor's Mr. Colvin, the request is to subdivide the parent tract into two lots separating the residential and commercial structures. Health Department is still pending. They are stating documents need to be filed showing the rear house is to be torn down or soil borings need to be done to establish the viability of a septic system. Soil borings need to be done for the commercial business building. Public water is available. It is not in a flood zone. The lots do exceed the minimum lot size requirement. Typically, stormwater drainage is required with major subdivisions. Residential structures are not permitted in commercial zoning, thus the rear home in the lot will, with the commercial building, will need to be removed or converted to an uninhabitable structure. That same lot will now contain two zoning classifications. As this is not permitted, the lot will need to be rezoned. Other development standards of commercial development will need to be met. Items such as hard surfacing, buffering, and landscaping, parking, lighting, and state commercial approvals will be needed. The petitioner, petitioners have requested a variance for a zero-foot front yard setback for the closed motorcycle business. Lot 1 will be addressed in the rezoning petition. We offered a favorable on the primary and secondary with all of the following still needed: rezoning of both lots, drainage and erosion control plan approval for any new development, record within 90 days, health department approval, and then removal of the rear home or conversion to an uninhabitable structure. Onto the rezoning. We are familiar with where the property is. It's currently zoned C6 Highway Commercial. The proposed zoning is R1 Single Family Residential for single-family residents. This area is identified primarily as suburban residential, but the property is surrounded by a mix of use, a bunch of mixed-use zonings, including C6 to the north, to the south, R1, C3, and R2, to the west, O1, and east, A1. So, this is Lot 1 of Red Brick Sub. Additional residential development in this area is encouraged by guidance stating that overtime density should be encouraged to increase moderately to allow average densities of 3 to 3.5 households per acre. This rezoning will not alter the general characteristics of the neighborhood. The petitioner is subdividing the older brick home, which is Lot 1 again, and leaving the older closed motorcycle shop as C6. The petitioners have requested the variance for zero front yard setback for the brick house along with two-foot reduction from the five-foot minimums, side yard setback from the county BZA. We offered a favorable recommendation for the rezoning request with the BZA approval for the variances.
Is the petitioner present? Is there anything you'd like to add to staff's report?
We just divided, we just wanted to keep our options open with the commercial base and the small home-based business, probably living in the.
Okay. Any questions for the petitioner from the Plan Commission? Is there anyone here speaking in opposition to this request? Not all entertain a motion on both docket numbers.
Those in favor? Aye.
Motion passes. Next item under New Business Subdivision, Major Primary, docket number 92, file number 51, 2025, Renovative Subdivision.
So, the property is on North 17th Street commencing at Haythorne and heading south 360 feet, 1.09 acres. Surveyor's Mr. Coleman, the request is to replat lots 649 through 657, a prairie view subdivision, creating eight new lots for residential housing. Health Department has approved a sanitary sewer is available. Public water is currently not available. It is not in a flood zone. Excuse me. Currently, only one lot exceeds the minimum lot size requirement. No new public streets. The area is well-served with other utilities, and stormwater drainage will be required with the major subdivision. Okay. So, the applicant applied for primary and secondary to be approved concurrently. Staff is of the opinion that primary only should be considered. The reasoning is discussed here shortly. The petitioner is seeking four variances: reduction in the minimum lot width from 50 to 40 feet, reduction in the minimum lot size from 60, 600 square feet to 55, 65 square feet for lots 2 through 7, and to Lot 56, 56, 42 square feet for Lot 8. A variance or waiver from having to do the primary plat, a front setback variance for Lot 1 off Haythorne. City Board is zoning approved, has approved variances 1, 2, and 4, and only the APC can approve, can provide a waiver on the primary plat. This sub has a lot of variables, which makes secondary hearing a reasonable request. First, there's currently no public water. If the developer is unable to or does not wish to run a water main to the location, then the number of lots will need to be decreased to allow for larger lot sizes. 10,000 square feet per lot will be needed for lots without public water. As noted, without public water, the number of lots will need to change. This can be done either on the primary or secondary plat. However, if the primary and secondary are approved concurrently, then the petitioner will need to resubmit the subdivision for approval, incurring additional expense and delay. If public water is utilized, then the fire department will likely request placement hydrants. The location of those hydrants will need to be placed on the plat. These can be added prior to secondary submittal. Second, if not granted, a variance for the minimum lot size reduction, the number of size and lots will need to change. This too can be done either on primary or secondary plat. However, if the primary and secondary are approved concurrently and the variance is not granted, then the petitioner will need to resubmit the subdivision for approval, incurring additional expense and delay. The petitioner has requested for the waiver of a secondary plat sitting, not wanting to have to provide a topographical map or stormwater and drainage calculations. No site plan was submitted with the subdivision. Accordingly, it is unknown if the development will impact the already existing stormwater system. This area of Terre Haute already has existing problems with stormwater runoff. City Engineering will need to review site plans to determine what, if any, improvements will be needed to accommodate the new development. Setbacks were also incorrect on the plat. So, we offered a favorable on the primary plat with following still needed prior to secondary submittal: determination of availability of public water, any possible adjustments to lot size and number to coincide with the city board zoning appeal, determination of hardship for a minimum lot size setback, drainage erosion control plan approval if needed, bonding for infrastructure if needed, fire department approval, which we have received, a preliminary site plan approval as well as some minor plat changes.
Okay. Is the petitioner present?
I'm Joshua Thompson with Renovative Solutions. I'm the general manager over there. Part of what we're planning on doing here is just trying to match the aesthetic of the neighborhood already and lot sizes that are currently across the street as seen there. There is currently one structure already there that is facing northbound on the corner of 17th and Haythorne. We plan to remodel that and downsize that parcel. It would be the lot that would be over the minimum lot requirements currently. We wouldn't have any other northward-facing properties built there. Everything from behind there that would be developed, the other seven houses would be developed facing 17th Street. And again, those lot sizes match pretty similarly to some of the aesthetic of the neighborhood already. The houses that we're proposing to build, as well as remodel, also exceed in some of the square footage that is in that area already, bringing just a little bit more, larger footprints for, you know, other options for potential home buyers, as well as we do plan on bringing water infrastructure down through there, which, you know, would also give, you know, residents right there in that area future possibilities for tapping into that at a much cheaper rate than what, you know, otherwise they could have, as well as allowing for future developments there on the north side of Haythorne. We believe that this, you know, this would be good for the community as well as, you know, for the north side of Terre Haute. I don't think, think that pretty well wraps it up unless you guys have some questions.
Okay. Any questions from the Plan Commission?
So, are we still for the primary and secondary separating?
That's staff's recommendation, and you, you understand that, that there are, there are things that you just told us that aren't on the plat that would need to be provided in a secondary submission. Staff's recommending that we, that we take action on a, on a primary and, and let you get all the stuff that you just expressed to us in a, in a secondary.
Absolutely. So, currently, we're working with Indiana American Water and Boyers out of Marshall.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, so we're, so that, that's been like pulling teeth, as I'm sure some of you guys may know, but, you know, we're, we're getting there, you know. We're, we're going to, you know, we're, we're problem solvers by nature, so we're going to cross any, we're going to get over any hurdle or obstacle in our path, and we're going to do it efficiently and correctly.
Sure.
So, you know, there are, like you said, there's still some, some things in irons, there's some irons in the fire that we need to figure out, which we are actively working towards, you know, and hopefully with the approval of you guys, we could be able to come back and, you know, look this up secondarily.
Right. Which is the purpose of primary approval, to let you know that we're basically on board conceptually with the project, and then you can work out the details and come back for a secondary?
Yes, sir.
If that's what staff's recommending, recommending?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions from anyone on the Plan Commission? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this request?
Those in favor? Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Next item under New Business Subdivisions, Major Secondary, docket number 39, file number 52, 2025, Hidden Grove Secondary.
Okay, so this is the secondary request to subdivide the 4.96 acres into multiple lots for single-family residential. Since the last submittal, which was primary, we have some updates, and we also have a new plat that is there for a handout in front of you, so I'll have you skip ahead to the review and comments new on the last page of the staff report, page 3 of 3. There, we note that the cul-de-sac was not correct, it is now. They have adjusted it to the correct radius. Lot sizes have been increased, increased to meet the minimum. Fire hydrants are now on the plat. Setbacks are not stated on the plat. If those on there.
or some irons in the fire that we need to figure out, which we are actively working towards, you know, and hopefully with the approval of you guys, we could be able to come back and, you know, look this up secondarily.
Right. Which is the purpose of primary approval, to let you know that we're basically on board conceptually with the project, and then you can work out the details and come back for a secondary?
Yes, sir.
If that's what staff's recommending?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions from anyone on the plan commission? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this request?
Motion to approve per staff recommendation. Second.
Those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Next item under new business subdivisions, major secondary, docket number thirty-nine, file number fifty-two, two thousand twenty-five, Hidden Grove Secondary.
So this is the secondary request to subdivide the four point nine six acres into multiple lots for single-family residential. Since the last submittal, which was primary, we have some updates, and we also have a new plat that is there for a handout in front of you, so I'll have you skip ahead to the review and comments new on the last page of the staff report, page three of three. There we note that the cul-de-sac was not correct, it is now. They have adjusted it to the correct radius. Lot sizes have been increased, increased to meet the minimum. Fire hydrants are now on the plat. Setbacks are not stated on the plat. Those on there? Okay. So the setbacks that were on the plat are listed as twenty-five front, five side, twenty-five rear. That's more restrictive than the city standards, and that's fine if they want to leave them that way. The subdivision will then be held to those standards as identified on the plat. Road cross-section was added to the plat. Utility easements have been added. An area for stormwater retention has been identified on the plat. There was an errant pin mark that has been removed. There are no infrastructure improvements apparent the day of the site visit. Everything all told, we still stood to offer a favorable recommendation on the secondary with drainage and erosion control plan approval and bonding for infrastructure if needed.
Okay. Is the petitioner present? Joe, anything you'd like to add? Nope. Any questions for Mr. Anderson? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this request? Those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Next item under new business subdivisions, major primary secondary, docket number eighty-one, file number forty-six, two thousand twenty-five, Vicki Hoffman subdivision.
The property is commonly associated with twelve six eight six East Ock Avenue, nine point nine oh one acres. Surveyor is Mr. French. Request is to subdivide the parent tract into five lots for residential development. Health department is still pending septic system information and location for both houses. Lot one needs a suitable drainage outlet location. Public water is available. Fire department did offer a favorable review. It is not in a flood zone. Lots to exceed the minimum lot size requirement. Typically, stormwater drainage is required with major subdivision. An easement across, exists across lots two and four to serve lot four, and easement across least lot three serves lot five. And this is a major subdivision due to the number of lots created from the parent tract over time and due to the size and intended use of the property. Staff would request a waiver of the major subdivision rules in favor of the minor subdivision rules. Staff is of the opinion that the addition of a new residence at this location would not serve to overburden the local infrastructure. A variance of scale has been requested due to the large area involved. Staff is of the opinion that the requested variance will not be injurious to the public health, safety, morals, convenience, or general welfare of the community. The value in the area adjacent to the property included in the variance will not be affected in any substantially adverse manner. The strict applications of the terms of this ordinance have resulted in an unnecessary hardship excluding financial reasons, excuse me, in the use of the property. Therefore, staff recommends favorably on the variance request. And we also offer favorably on the primary and secondary with the following still needed: road cut permits where needed, report within ninety days, and then health department approval.
Is the petitioner present? Anything you'd like to add to staff's report? Any questions from the plan commission? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this request? Now I'll entertain a motion. Those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Next item under new business subdivisions, major primary secondary, docket number eighty-six, file number forty-seven, two thousand twenty-five, Gekeler one lot subdivision.
The property is on South Thirty-eighth Street, just north of the property commonly known as Eight Seventy-Five South Thirty-eighth Street, one point three four acres. Surveyor is Mr. Tolls. The request is to subdivide the parent tract into two lots for residential development. Health department has approved. Sanitary sewer is available. Public water is also available. It's not in a flood zone, and the lots to exceed the minimum lot size requirement. Typically, stormwater drainage is required with major subdivisions. A survey for the parcel was created and recorded, and the creation of the parcel was completed without a platted subdivision and the subsequent approval of the Vigo County Area Plan Commission. Consequently, the property has no associated buildable rights, until which point a subdivision is signed and sealed by the area plan commission, no building permits could be issued for this parcel. The failure to abide by the applicable subdivision law is an impediment to using land for development and has resulted in a non-buildable parcel. The described property is not a legal lot of record, rather just a taxable parcel described from within a parent tract. In all the cases, the ordinance requires a platted subdivision and subsequent approval of the area plan commission for the conveyance of buildable rights. The approval of this plat is contingent upon the plat being recorded within ninety days. We did offer favorable on the primary and secondary with the following needed prior to permitting. Drainage and erosion control plan approval if needed, and then bonding for infrastructure if needed.
Is the petitioner present? Matt, anything you'd like to add? Any questions from the plan commission? Go ahead.
I just, basically, my name's Erin Gekeler, and basically, when we bought the land, it was split in half. We just want to take it back to where my daughter-in-law can build on the other half.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anyone here would like to speak to this issue? Those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Next item under new business subdivisions, major primary secondary, docket number ninety-one, file number fifty, two thousand twenty-five, Bullseye Jag.
The property is currently aggravating grounds north of the New Margaret and west of Highway forty or forty-six. Before I forget, just want to draw your attention to handout associated with this. It is twenty-five point oh three acres, eight lots. Surveyor is Mr. Tolls. The request is to subdivide the parent tract into eight lots for commercial development. Health department has approved. Sanitary sewer is available. The plat indicates a frontage road to be constructed. City of Terre Haute Engineering Department will need to approve the road design and construction before accepting it. One thing that was added to the new handout is a cul-de-sac on the end of the frontage This does require Form seventy-four sixty to be filed with the FAA. The property does fall within the sixty-five D and L noise contour surrounding the Terre Haute Regional Airport. Holman Field has defined an FAR part one fifty noise compatibility plan. In addition to the CFR, NDOT's Office of Aviation requires a permit for any building erected for a noise-sensitive purpose within fifteen hundred feet of extended runway centerline for one nautical mile from any public-use airport. This project does meet those requirements. Public water is available, though there are some concerns over the amount of available water. It's not in a flood zone. The lot does exceed the minimum lot size requirement. The new roads are planted at sixty feet in width. Other details have been provided as part of the updates, and the cross-section has also been added. Area is well-served with utilities. Stormwater drainage will be required with this major subdivision. The property is correctly zoned for the proposed development. It was zone C three, and that was ordinance number six of nineteen ninety-eight. Public storm sewer easements cross lots seven and eight. A Duke, let's see, Duke and Gasline easements exist along the south of the property. Other easements for utility, like I say, those have been added to the plat. NDOT may require modifications to Highway forty or forty-six to accommodate the drive cut. Hydrant locations have been added. TIFF funds will be used to aid in the infrastructure development, and the flood zone info is now on the plat. We offered a favorable on the primary and secondary with the following needed to recording: any road cut permits from NDOT, FAA forms, and NDOT Office of Aviation approval, and then needed prior to permitting drainage and erosion control plan approval, bonding for infrastructure if needed, and then we now have fire department approval.
Okay. Brian, anything you'd like to add? Nope. Any questions for the developer from the plan commission? Anyone here would like to speak to this issue? Sure. Come on up so we can hear you.
My name is Elsa Morris. I live at the first property north of, of this, and I'm really glad to see Terre Haute build, I really am. But I do have a couple of questions about all of this. There are, I think, six houses north of, of this property along forty-six, and I don't believe that everybody there has water and sewer. Will that be made available to those people north of this property? Is that a possibility?
I don't believe that's, that's a possibility or in the plans.
Well, I'm sorry. If, if you're going to put water and sewer and gas and all that stuff in that property, we can't have that too?
They already exist there.
It is north?
No, in the, in the parcel that's being submitted, water and sewer are already available.
Okay. But he did that since I've, I mean, they've done that since I lived there, and nobody made me aware that I could have water and sewer, or can I get water and sewer? That's what I'm asking.
You, you can't get water and sewer from this developer.
No, 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 no. I mean, is it available to those of us who live there so that, I mean, is there anything that has to be done for that so that we could have it as well, is my point, at this time?
Water, Matt might be able to help. Is, does the twelve-inch main that's on the east side of forty-six extend north? I mean, that's a complicated way to get water, but that's what I know from being involved in development out there.
Yeah, I think, I think it might.
See, that's the only way now that you, now that I know of, that you can get it where I live.
Right.
But if that's going to be right here, how come I can't have it from this side of the road?
That, totally a question for Indiana American, and that may be the case. I don't, I don't know. I do know that, that to, to, they won't extend a service line that far. They would have you, I mean, when the Walmart development went in, there was a, an eighteen-inch bore underneath forty-six that brought a twelve-inch line over, it's two hundred thousand dollars to get that to there, and that, that, that's what you're looking at, that's.
Two hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, there are no mains that they, that you can easily access. I do know that. And the sewer's extremely complicated out there. It's thirty feet deep and a lift station that was put in for the apartments and stuff, and I don't believe there's an easy way to get sewer from where you live to connect to the city's infrastructure.
Okay. Then the ditch goes right directly by my house, the north ditch that goes under forty-six?
Yes.
Okay. So, and it, I think it may go behind, but at any rate, when, when the Army Corps of Engineers first set out the, their feelings on all of this before Walmart built, it said that they were going to put a concrete pipe or concrete piping in that ditch instead of leaving it open. Is that really going to happen now? Or nobody knows? Does anybody know?
Right now, we've got no plans to, the ditch you're talking about is right here. There's, there's your property.
Right. Correct.
The ditch you're talking about is, is right in there.
No, it's right here. It goes all the way.
Right, right. Yeah, it kind, it kind of goes like this, it kind of goes like this. There's, there's a pipeline.
Yeah, right.
We're, this yellow line is where this development stops, so we're, we're stopping several hundred feet south of your property line, actually. Yeah.
Okay. So then, so then, this ditch has for forty-nine years flooded my backyard, or this back acre. Now, I paid someone two years ago to come in here and physically go out there and get the trash out.
Okay.
And so it's much better now, but is this going to rea-effect me when all this goes in?
No, all of this development is going to, is going to be directed, the drainage is going to be directed to these two sixty-inch pipes that the city put in. And then they, they built this in twenty nineteen.
The retention pond, yeah.
They built that pond. That was specifically for development for all, all of that area.
Well, and see, and this hasn't helped me in, in any way, shape, or form. So, does this belong to this property? This ditch? Or who does that belong to?
Well, it, it runs along the line. It's, it starts off on, on this property, but it does go on to your property. It kind of goes right down the line.
It goes beside my property?
Yeah.
As I see it?
Yeah, it goes along the property.
And will that ever be cleaned out?
Well, it's.
It's, it's full of trees and stuff?
This, this project won't, won't touch it.
Well, okay, so you're not going to do anything with this at this time?
No.
Okay, okay. So who do I see about water and sewer and just because, two hundred thousand dollars to get the sewer?
Well, I don't know that. I, you would have to contact Indiana American Water.
Well, I did, but they didn't call me back.
All right. Like I said before, good luck with that.
Okay. The people next to me years ago had water brought across under the road, and I know they didn't have two hundred thousand dollars to spend.
Yeah, you might be able to, it's, it'll be salty to get it. I didn't, I didn't know whether they would bore a service line that far or not, but they may well.
Well, it, well, I don't think they'll ever call me back, but I just wonder if there's anybody here could help with that kind of thing. Okay. Those are kind of my questions, and you're going to tell us what they're going to put in here.
The water would be easier than the sewer, I, I can guarantee you, yeah.
You're going to tell us what's going to go in here?
Retail.
Fantastic, okay. That's fantastic, because we need jobs and stuff here. So that's, I'm not unhappy about it.
Yeah.
But I thought, this is kind of weird, you know? So, because I followed this since, since before Walmart was built, when the, because the first thing I heard was Army Corps of Engineers soap.
Right. Okay.
They don't have anything to consider anymore, right?
May I, to help with the Indiana American Water, it's my understanding that the mayor is working to have a representative from American Water actually physically be in Terre Haute to be able to meet with residents. So I would call the mayor's office and see when that might be happening.
Oh, okay, thank you, because I'm really curious. Well, that, but that, of course, doesn't help me with the sewer, does it? Yeah, okay. Thank you. I mean, I'm okay, but I'm looking toward the future.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak to this issue? Those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Next item under new business, county rezonings, docket number eighty-five, UZO number eighteen, two thousand twenty-five, three thousand one, East Spring Hill Drive, from a C seven to an A one agricultural and rural residential district.
The property is on the south side of Spring Hill, approximately three hundred and thirty feet to the west of the intersection of East Spring Hill and South Fagan Street. It's currently zoned C seven, general commercial district. The proposed zoning is A one agricultural district for future homestead without buildings. This area is primarily identified as suburban residential. The area does consist of farm ground and single-family homes. Sanitary sewer is not available in this area. To the northwest and east are all A one zonings, to the south is a C seven. Notices were sent to adjacent property owners who have been one-half mile of the address, doing so satisfies section one N of the UZO. Barnyard animals will be permitted and are anticipated, as well as any other use as identified under Indiana Coke thirty-six, seven four six sixteen B one. The C seven zoning was an original zoning from nineteen ninety-six. The property was previously used as Van Gilder well drilling. The business is no longer in operation, and the petitioner purchased the property from his family. There are two outbuildings left on the property that the petitioner wishes to keep for storage. Spring Hill in general is thought to be mainly commercial or residential in zoning, however, this most eastern part is still predominantly A one with some residential mixed in. Zoning to A one would provide continuity of zoning across this district and provide a blank slate for future development. So we offered a favorable recommendation for the rezoning request.
Is the petitioner present? Anything you'd like to add to staff's report?
Really? Just going to go back to agriculture, mainly stores and outbuildings, leftover rock, it's going to be probably used for future preparation.
Okay. Any questions from the plan commission for the petitioner? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this request? I'll entertain a motion. Those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Next item under new business, county rezonings, docket number ninety, UZO number twenty, two thousand twenty-five, three six six five, South Fourteenth and a Half Street, from a C six to an RS, single-family residential suburban district.
The property is located just over the railroad tracks to the west of South Fourteenth and a Half Street. Common address of thirty-six fifty-five South Fourteenth and a Half Street. Currently zoned C six highway commercial district. The proposed zoning RS, single-family residential suburban district for the proposed use of the existing single-family homes. Area is identified as a neighborhood enhancement area, and the property is surrounded by a mix of zoning uses. Sanitary sewer and public water are not available to the whole of the property. To the north is open space or OS, R two M, which is two-family medium. That's the RS, single-family. To the south is A one and C six. To the west is O one, and to the east is C six and M one. So this rezoning is two parts of a three-lot subdivision. The petitioner is subdividing the commercial storage units away from the existing two homes located on the property. The petition only lists thirty-six fifty-five South Fourteenth and a Half, but it also includes thirty-six fifty-one South Fourteenth and a Half Street. Prior to the subdivision, all three lots were considered legal non-conforming. The subdivision and subsequent rezoning forfeits that legal non-conforming status, thus all three lots must be brought into performance. The two lots- The two lots as a part of this rezoning to residential shouldn't have many difficulties, meaning the ordinance. Lot one, where the commercial storage buildings are located, will need VCA approval. Will also need rezon to C3, as many warehouses are a listed use by right in the C3 district. The owner of the two new residential lots must agree to waive any buffering requirements to the surrounding C6 or C3 zoned properties. The waiver must be in writing and attached to the deed or title. We offered a favorable recommendation for the rezoning request with a setback, setback in buffering waiver to be reported with the deed or title.
Mr. Shagley.
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of the commission. My name is Richard Shagley. I'm here, I'm with the law firm of Wright, Shagley &amp; Lowery, and tonight I'm here on behalf of U Store it LLC. As Jared mentioned, this property is located 3655 South 14th and a Half Street. If you've ever played Ray Park and 16, it abuts 16. If you ever played on, if you recall in 17, behind you on the, there used to be a sign on the fence that said, "I hope you can cross this field in 6.5 seconds because the bull can do it in 6.8 seconds." That's just a little memory there for you. But this property has, is being subdivided in three parcels. Two of them are going to have residential, and one is for the storage units. The petitioner is simply wanting to rezone the two parcels that have the res, the residential parts into a residential zoning classification. As stated, they're currently C6, which obviously doesn't fit for a single-family home. I'd be happy to answer any questions, ma'am.
Any questions from anyone on the Plan Commission? Anyone here speaking in opposition to this request? Now they'll entertain a motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. If I may, Mr. President, I was not able to attend last month. I was on a volunteer trip out of town, and I had an attorney that was supposed to attend, and he got sick, and as you may recall, Kelsey Hankwitz appeared on, on my behalf. And upon my return, I was told two things. One, that Mr. Hanley was very kind, and two, that she will never.
I apologize for, for representing you.
Yeah, and, and two, she'll never go to that meeting again. So, I hope I don't have any more conflict.
That was a success for me.
Yeah, yeah, she was very appreciative of your kindness in the process, so I just thought the president would.
She did very well.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
But I appreciate your assistance in that endeavor, and hopefully it never comes to the point where I have to ask her to attend again. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, under new business, city-county general ordinance, docket number 83, general ordinance number one, 2025, amend unified zoning ordinance, right-of-entry.
So, general ordinance number one of 25 is an amendment to section 6 of the UZO enforcement. As currently written, the director or his designee may only enter onto a, enter upon a property with the consent of a property owner. So, as written, this restricts planning personnel from being able to respond to a complaint for a structure or activities that cannot be viewed from the road or public right-of-way. This, along with staffing shortages, often leaves staff unable to determine properly and in a timely manner if a, if in fact a violation is ongoing or reported an error. Errors reported without proper investigation incurs unnecessary expenses by the county and the potential of lost time and wages by Vigo County residents. So the outcome of this amendment, it does not change the need for a warrant to interstructure not open to the public, and does not grant special deputy status or convey any rights outside of those already outlined in the UZO. The director or his designee will only be able to investigate items related to zoning, subdivision, or the special flood hazard areas. When available or necessary, code enforcement officers will still respond to complaints.
Got anything?
That's it, yeah.
That's all you got?
I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from anyone on the Plan Commission about the change in the ordinance language?
May I?
Sure.
Is this absolutely necessary to try? I mean, someone who walk on someone's property, privately, privately, you also have the authority to come to this. This allows, you, you have a right to your personal effects, your privacy, and you want by allowing you to come on board to the property without the permission, why is it so? How do you feel?
Okay, that, that's a good question. I'll, I'll state that we only respond to complaints. So, we are responding for arriving on the property because we have received a complaint either from another department or from an adjacent or nearby property owner that there is an ongoing violation to the zoning ordinance. Once we arrive on the property, like I stated now, I currently cannot do anything except for stop on the road and take pictures from the road. Particularly during the summertime or in areas that are hilly in nature, not much can be seen, if anything at all. So I have no way of knowing and confirming or stating that there is not sufficient evidence to warrant further persecution or further action from our office to that complaint that we received. So, while we do respect property owners' rights, we do so by only responding to complaints for enforcement actions. So I'm not out driving around looking for problems. We have enough of them that we have to deal with. I don't want any more than what we already have.
Do you have already been raised, uh, code enforcement officer?
Correct.
So if you, that, if there is a cause in that this would be called, my concern is this is just a matter of convenience than normal enforcement officer. You still have the same enforcement process, you have a code enforcement officer. I'm not compelled to be, if this is necessary, other than the fact that it is convenience of this process, is, is that any, is, that actually should be necessary. And that, to me, that violating some person's privacy, I, I don't know what's going on in my house, but that we give him time, things are probably without notice or without permission, what else could be, what else could be going on there? It's private to the, to the home. I'm just a little concerned about that legal rule that just imposes on people's rights, freedom of privacy of their self, and their searches, and their future, and their article in the Constitution. I'm concerned that you're, your policy, that this, we have to hold Constitution, we have a battle, and we, I'm concerned about that.
I might just say that I don't, I think it's the opposite of what you're worried about. I don't, I think it's, I think it's an inconvenience for our staff, but what they're trying to do is assist building inspection who can't keep up with responding to violations, and they have the authority to do that in building inspection, and we're, what, what we're being tasked with is, is trying to respond to complaints about zoning violations, and we can't see them, and we can't get anybody else to go out, and, and our staff is willing to go out as an inconvenience, but they're, but if you can't see it, you can't see it. I mean, I don't think he's proposing that we go into houses. There are still requirements for search warrants, and I think this meets all of the legal ramifications for doing this. They're, they're wanting to be able to see if there's a violation or not. If you can't see it, there's, you know, what do we do then? Just tell everybody that's calling, "Sorry, we can't see it."
Now, this means it still has to have a warrant, a legal file?
You know, the premises, sure.
But any closed structure? Yes.
Sheriff, you go out alone?
Uh, yes.
Is he a detective, or officer with you, or police officer?
Not typically, no.
Ask permission, because, I mean, is that, is that something that occur, that you didn't get permission, or put this, this in this point of schedule, things that you do a drive-by, can't see it? There probably some kind of way to give you, without permission, would probably be at all, would be some kind of conversation.
So, okay. The enforcement process is, is lengthy. Typically, we receive a complaint, and prior to sending out any, what we call nastograms or initial contact to the owner, either myself or the code enforcement officer will investigate that complaint. There are times when we find that those complaints are unfounded. If so, then we'll dismiss the complaint. If we find that there is sufficient evidence, then we will notify the petitioner, not petitioner, but the property owner, that we believe that there is an ongoing violation, and ask them to contact our office to see if we can't resolve it in some way. To, to answer your question, yeah, I often do it by myself, just as, as a necessity, because there's only five of us in this office. I don't ask for assistance from the sheriff's department unless there is a situation where I feel uncomfortable, or, you know, for some reason, it's just, it doesn't strike me as being someplace I need to be or want to be. When those situations occur, I will not enter onto the property without assistance or without first contacting code enforcement officer to see if he would go on our behalf.
Have you been by yourself, dressed, when you look like this, or by something else?
No.
He's got a vest on.
Yeah, that's a great question, and I have very carefully, over the years, curated that. So we are in a marked Vigo County vehicle. I have lights that I turn on, they're not red or blue, they're amber and white, so I'm visible when I pull onto the property. I will always be dressed in proper attire with, with the logo badged. I have on my person my identification, and then I also have business cards I can hand out if I need to. I, I do everything I can to make my presence known while I'm there, including knock on doors. Don't often get a response, but occasionally somebody will meet us, and I always make sure I stop and talk to them, and ask questions, and provide as much information as I can. And a lot of times, that'll resolve the issue.
I think you've acknowledged that, you mentioned, and I just feel that that, about the process, that this is something you swap right on to, you know, like a whole, in fact, and take the hands of this, the ordinance.
No, I.
You have a process.
Yeah, I, thank you, thank you, and I pardon the interruption. I, I don't, I don't want to have to do enforcement unless it's absolutely necessary, because that incurs additional staff hours, mailings, certified mailings. Then, beyond that, we have to get code enforcement involved, they have to issue citations, we have to summons them to appear here. If they don't appear here, then we have to summons them to Division Four, which incurs additional expenses through legal attorneys, and then we have court costs, and it just, it can take a year or more to resolve these. So I would prefer to work out in any way possible a resolution prior to anything beyond that initial first contact.
So this ordinance, does that, that's the intent?
The intent is to.
Or the amendment provision?
To resolve the issue before it becomes an issue. Thank you.
Jared, you said you, when you receive complaints, what percentage of the complaints are from neighbors?
The majority.
Right. I mean, that's why I have a problem with this. You have a misunderstanding with the neighbor, and every time he turns around, he's calling somebody to report you, and then the only person that has to deal with it is the person that the complaint was filed against. You said you can't get on the property. I thought, you have some really intelligent people working for you. Buy a drone, and the, I mean, you can buy a drone right now for a couple hundred bucks and go out on the property, take pictures. I got a niece that, that is ate up with drones, and she spends two, three hundred bucks on one and takes pictures of, of parks around, around her house. I mean, it, it's everything that you would need to do, and we wouldn't have to. I just see, I, maybe I'm alarmist, but this is shouting me like somebody shows up on my property one day and says, "You can't stop me." And I just not up for that.
If I might again interject, it seems like to me that we're going down a rabbit hole, and that's not the intent of this at all. The order, the ordinance that you're reading exists, we're just striking the first line. And what I think the intent is, is to go, to go to a piece of property that there has been a complaint and knock on the door, and if there's no response, be able to step two feet in the front yard and look around the fence and see if they've got a still in the backyard or not. I mean, I think that's how simple this is. I think we're making more out of it than, than we need to.
Yeah, as of right now, I can't, I can't approach that front door and knock on it. I have to stop in the road and take pictures.
Right.
And then move on.
Go ahead.
And.
Says, says the ordinance.
And code enforcement officers, they already have the ability to do this, right?
They're badge deputies.
Yes.
So this is just basically conveying an authority that they already have to you as well, so that you can assist in, well, not all of these.
Not all of it.
I say, not all of them.
Just, just that.
Just this.
Just that.
Just this, in order.
Just review.
In order to help with some of the, the caseload, I guess.
Yes, I, I would like the right to be able to go knock on somebody's front door to say, "We received a complaint. Is there any truth to this? Can you tell me, if, is it neighbor to neighbor?"
Right.
Can I ask, would you, would you, would you, next year, have a hold on this particular experience with that, have this particular ordinance exist, next year, sort of, how that, how that interacts with? Could you, could you keep notes on some of those, or please present that, please, in a year, to see how that works?
Yeah. Yeah, let me put some thought into that, but yes, we can do that.
Does code enforcement officer have to be different?
I don't know that.
Not like, could we just swear, and then, code enforcement officers, and they already have, it's still, uh, it's really, like, oh.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know.
Didn't have that. You're going to have to go through the business, and then, this, this, I agree, I agree with you about this, making them out, not more, but probably, but it does give you some power for something, party out there, I'll give you, swear, and you're like, code enforcement officer, you're a plan supervisor, that might be the easiest route, we don't have to worry about this, it's, it's going to come down the road, so.
Yeah, I don't have any idea whether that's, do you know? I don't know either.
I'm just going to ask you, what's the opinion of legal counsel?
They, they didn't have any objection.
Was there any?
I don't know, it's just, I'm just kind of, yeah.
How long has it been written as-is? Since inception?
Were you guys, can't go on anybody else's?
Since the inception of it. Yeah, the.
The ordinance existed, he's, he's asking to strike the first line.
Yeah, the previous director sought and received special deputy status to be able to do this, and I've never wanted the, that additional special deputy or anything that went along with it. I, I'm not interested in law enforcement in any way, I just would like to take care of what we need to take care of, which is in line with our job description and, and our current position, my current position.
I think it seems like in the discussion, our concern is, is not disrespecting property. Sue, we know that you would honor this for what it is, but if it's in place, it allows somebody that wants to use it.
Well, I think it only allows people on our staff to use it, and I think we, as a commission, can certainly handle that.
I think it's crazy that you don't have the right to walk up and knock on the door, so.
I do too, because, I mean, I believe I could.
Everybody else in the board can do it.
Right, knock on your door, you know, staff's just hindered by not being able to. Anyone else have any comments? Now they'll entertain a motion, one way or the other.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second? Second, those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
To oppose, motion passes. Next item under new business, resolutions, docket number 84, resolution number three, 2025, amend the area Plan Commission bylaws, decorum and foster the effective administration of meetings.
Okay, so on September 16th, September 16th of this year, the commissioners introduced and adopted a resolution refining rules and policies governing the conduct for attendees of their public meetings. Commissioners felt it was in the best interest of all agencies to adopt a similar, the same or similar policies and procedures with the intent to provide the general public with a clear and concise set of standards for those whom choose to attend public meetings. So as written, Article 11, Section 2. So as written, Article 11, Section 2 reads, and that's of the bylaws for the area plan commission. Every person appearing before the commission shall abide by the orderly direction of the precedent, discourteous, disorderly, or contemptuous conduct shall be regarded as a breach of privileges for the commission and shall be dealt with as the commission directs. So this amendment serves to further define disruptive conduct and outline steps to maintain order. In addition, the City of Terre Haute Board of Zoning Appeals and Vigo County Board of Zoning Appeals will be considering adopting this same or a similar amendment in their upcoming meetings. So this would be then the resolution of the area plan commission, Vigo County, to amend the bylaws, Article 11, Section 2, conduct a public hearing, establishing policies and procedures to protect decorum and foster the effect, effective administration of meetings, also Article 13 reconsideration. So this reads, whereas the plan commission or board, the area plan commission or board, or APC conducts county business during its regularly scheduled and if necessary, special meetings, all of which are open to the public, and whereas Indiana Code 3674401 permits the board to adopt reasonable rules or policies governing the conduct for all attendees of their public meetings, and whereas the board believes in its, in its best interest to the county as well as those individuals who choose to attend public meetings, the board to adopt standard policies and procedures for the administration of public meetings to supplement, or as the case may be, in lieu of the parliamentary procedure set forth in Roberts Rules of Orders, and whereas the policy and procedures adopted herein are intended to provide the general public with clear and concise set of standards for public meetings held by the area plan commission, and when applicable, rules regulating the conduct and decorum of members of the general public who wish to attend said public meetings, and whereas in order to protect general meeting decorum and foster more effective administrative of pub, administration of public meetings, the APC now desires to adopt standard policies and procedures applicable to public meetings held by the APC according to the general parameters stated herein. So therefore, the area plan commission for Vigo County, Indiana resolves to amend Article 11, Section 2, to read as follows. Pursuant to Indiana Code 3674401, the area plan commission adopts the following rules governing the conduct of all members of the public who are physically present at a public meeting for the board. The board will take public comments only for agenda items before or during the board's discussion or consideration of the agenda item, and prior to taking official action on the agenda item. Additional public comments will be held at the end of the agenda. Members of the public or attendee must appear in person or by other approved methods in order to speak during the agenda topic discussion and/or during the allotted public comment section on the agenda. No attendees may engage in conduct that disrupts the meeting. The following are examples of potentially disruptive conduct. Disorderly, contemptuous, slanderous, profane, abusive remarks, or utterances toward any member of the, of the APC, county staff, or members of the public resulting in disruption of the APC meeting. A breach of the peace, disruptive, boisterous, loud, or threatening conduct, or violent disturbance resulting in disruption of the APC meeting. Disobedience of any lawful order or of the presiding member, which includes an order to be seated, to remove items that obstruct the view of other audience members, impede ingress or egress, or obstruct the aisle or passageways, or to refrain from addressing the APC resulting in disruption of the meeting. Any other conduct which results in disruption of the meeting. Public comments must be limited to three minutes of speaking time. If an attendee uses their permitted time, they may only continue with the permission of the presiding member. If no permission is granted, the attendee may be asked to stop speaking by that presiding member. The presiding member will take reasonable steps to maintain order within, with respect to attendees and the APC. The presiding member will identify the disruptive activity and issue a verbal warning to the attendee to cease and desist from the disruptive activity. If, after receiving a second warning from the presiding member, an attendee persists and continues to disrupt the meeting, the presiding member may order that person to leave the meeting. If the attendee does not remove himself or herself, the presiding member, or upon a majority vote of the APC, may order the sheriff or sheriff's designee to remove the attendee from the meeting location for the duration of the meeting. Nothing in this section may be construed to prohibit law enforcement officer from immediately removing an attendee from a meeting if the removal of the attendee is necessary to maintain order or to ensure the safety of another person. The attendee commits a criminal offense, or the attendee violates the rules or policies governing the conduct of the meeting as adopted by the governing body. Persons wishing to supplement public comment with written materials may do so by submitting the materials in advance, in person, or via email to the area planning department, or during the public comment period if permitted by the presiding member. Questions?
Questions, comments from anyone on the Plan Commission?
I would just say that, you know, we have, we have had some contentious meetings, and most of this, we do, we felt we needed to do something because it was fair to everybody to have three minutes. Like last night, if we would have let people go on and on and on, we could have been here even longer, and other people might not have had a chance. So that's, that's kind of the thing, the three minutes is fairness. My only regret is that this doesn't say elected officials only have three minutes.
It's not too late to add that. You can add that to ours.
Any other questions or comments? Now that I'll entertain a motion.
This only requires a majority vote for proof.
Okay. Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Motion adjourned.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Did you think I brought up the license?
No, we didn't.
What's that?
I brought up private.
No, no. We've had some, we've-
Get him here, get him up high.
See, buddy?
Don't worry.
Good.
Good.
Did you sell that house, that second house here?
Aye.
I'm crazy.
Yeah.